I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First bow I had some prayer. Oh God of all times and all people. In these days of religious celebration, we stand in awareness of the comfort to be found in our many traditions. And the courage exhibited by those who came before us. And in the hope that can grow out of sorrow and rejection. In the season of reflection, we see your guiding, your guiding presence. All of us have our strengths and our weaknesses. All of us are quick to see the faults in others and not our own. All of us can let our anger outweigh our loves. On this sacred occasion, when we come together in one room for the betterment of our community. Help us to appreciate the importance of each person here. Help us to speak with thoughtfulness and to listen with respect. Help us to work together so that our desires and our concerns may benefit the whole. We are grateful for this opportunity to serve. Bless this council that it may continue to lift up the best in one another. Thus we pray in the name of the one whose presence brings comfort, courage, and hope to all. Amen.
Amen. Okay, next is the approval of the minutes that all of you have had an opportunity to read over them. And do we have any corrections that we need to make to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'm moving accept the minutes, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
I'm moving accept the minutes.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And the next is a presentation from the Eden Police Department. Chief Henry King is going to give us a presentation at this moment. The chief, the floor is yours.
Good evening, council, mayor, citizens of Edington. I'm here tonight before you for a situation that I want the council and the citizens to hear me. And let's have a conversation about what is going on in our town. Want to give an update. So we last met at Chalone Church on February 9th. Counsel, I gave you some material that's beside you, which is a white paper and a circle. I passed those out that night of February 9th. And later on, we're going to go into that in detail. But I want to give you the update. So when we met on February 9th, we had a homicide that occurred on Jackson Street. And then we had two other shootings, one on 700 block of MLK and another one on Old Hereford, on 300 block of Old Hereford Road. Right now, in those cases, we don't have any leads. We're working, we're waiting on the lab. I want everyone to understand that the state lab, and I'm not making excuses for them, but it's just, it is what it is. It's not like CSI Miami where we find evidence and then after the commercial, we know who the suspect is. It doesn't work like that. The state lab has, they oversee about 586 in North Carolina. So we have a pick and order. The evidence was dropped off and we're just waiting. Sometimes that could take two to three years or whenever they get around to it. But we are, we are working on that. And the reason why we're working on that is because we lack, as a community, we lack and we have to get away from this no snitching. That's the reason why you see that. We have got to learn to be able to tell what we see when we see it, not be afraid retaliation. We, we have, we have to stop empowering these criminals. Because the more we empower them, the more they feel like that they know that you're afraid, the more they're going to continue to commit crime. We have to step up and we have to let these criminals know that it is not going to go this way in our town. You can go to Hereford, you can go to Elizabeth City, you can go to Bertie, but you're not going to do it here in Edington. So also, I updated everyone about our shootings year by year. I mentioned that back in 2020, we experienced 32 shootings. Well, I wanted everybody to know that in those 32 shootings, we seized 11 guns for the entire year during 2020. In 2021, we experienced 19 shootings and for the year where we seized 16 guns. In 2022, we experienced 12 shootings and we seized nine guns. We're here in 2023, we have experienced 12 shootings already this year. And we have already seized 16 guns and it's only April. That many guns were seized off the streets that involved criminal activity. Now, we're not going to get into politics or gun legislation, but it is a problem that people can get a gun in society faster than they can get a job. Now I'm going to touch back on it, next slide. If you look at this title, it talks about Edington's perception versus Edington reality. I found videos that date all the way back to 2014. And I'm sure if I did more research, I could even go back into further. But we're going to play some videos here and without the sound because of all the cussing and all the, the other negative stuff that goes along with it. But I want the citizens to see what goes on in this town as relates to these young men making terrible decisions. And which is causing the issues that we have back and forth. What you're going to see is this group that call themselves FOEL. A lot of these individuals are right here and they're making these videos with these guns. And they're talking about, they're sending subliminal messages to the other rival people about what they're going to do if they see them on the street. A lot of these videos, they say that these guns are props, but when we actually seize these guns in cases, they look just like the guns that were played in these videos. And we're doing more in-depth examination to be able to show that. Because it's my hope, even if I make case law, it is my hope to be able to charge anyone that touched that gun in that video with possession of firearms by convict and felon if they're convicted felon. Next, next video, Tammy. This is the other rival group that they were sending the message to. This young man, this young man that's, that's smoking the marijuana cigarette in the song actually admits that he is a member of the Crips in the song. And he's letting them know that if I see you, then it's pretty much whatever. And a lot of these videos were made. That is water for apartments kind of tucked back in. They have like a gazebo back there. That's why I encouraged the citizens that when you see these people gathering around doing this kind of stuff, call the police. We have got to stop helping these individuals. You can call the police and say, hey, it's a bunch of kids out there. I don't know what they're doing, but they're looking like they're doing something. Because we could have showed up and, and found them with guns, money, and, and drugs. Skip the third clip, Tammy, and go to the fourth. No, 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 skip that and go to that. Yes, ma'am. This is actually, this is actually a song that they wrote called Shots Fired. Where the individual, Mr. Pugatti, stated that the police department keeps putting him on the news, but they ain't caught him in anything. And Tammy, they're not going to play the words in here. But again, they're making videos that were just released July 27, 2022. Same thing, there's another song that just released, that was just released January 25th, 2023.
Chief, you might also want to tell them what that shooter P stands for.
Well, that was the, that was unfortunately, that was the young man's street name, the young man who was just killed on Jackson Street. But however, in one of those videos, there were a lot of his members of this FOEL group that were there representing this shooter P. And they have their little nicknames in the group as well, too. So, you know, we don't want that in our town. We want positive things to happen. We want to help these individuals. And I'm going to talk about that later on in my slide. Now this, this song right here, they talks about who won't smoke, which is pretty much who won't beef, who wants to mess with us. And, and again, they're all in here with all these, with all these guns, drugs, and, and holding up guns. And they send their subliminal messages to the other rival group in town.
Chief, what's the average age of these kids?
Some of these gentlemen are between the age of 24 and in their mid 30s. So these are not somebody that, these are not someone, the kids that are, but they have influence on some of these kids.
Absolutely. Seems to me they need six weeks in the Marine Corps to try to train them out.
Nice eye of gun, yeah.
Chief, where are they getting these guns?
Well, some of the guns come back stolen. Some of the guns come back to individuals. Unfortunately, in North Carolina, if, if Mayor Stallings buys a gun from Chauncey's Pawn Shop legally, and then he sells it to me, he doesn't have to really do a bill of sales. And also, and then when the gun is seized and I call the individual back, say, hey, why was your gun seized? That was, the mayor's going to say, well, I sold it to Henry King. But do you have any paperwork showing that? No, I don't have any paperwork. So I don't know if he's lying or not. I don't know if the mayor's made a straw purchase really for me and I won't possess that gun. There's so many loopholes that need to be fixed in those things. That's fine, Tammy. I think we, we'll have to play the last one. You can go to the next slide. I think we pretty much have a point that we have, we have an issue, we have always had an issue. But we need to address these individuals. And so what is, so what is my plan? So the town manager and I met with the housing authority, Ms. Deborah Davis. It's going to install some new cameras on her property. And she is willing to sell those cameras that she have back to the town at a real reduced price. We're going to put those cameras in other locations in town. Because again, I'm not here to point the finger, but a lot of the issues that we have with the apartments and ways with apartments like I reported on February 9th, cameras have been down for a long time. And when we had the incident on Boswell Street, they are still down. Now, but the town cannot force an apartment complex to get their cameras up and running. Which would have been perfect that night on top of what we had to give us additional information. But the difference on Boswell Street that just occurred versus what occurred on Jackson Street and other previous shootings is people are tired. They're fed up. They're starting to call. They're starting to say, I want to remain anonymous, but this is what I saw. This is what it was. And as a result of that, the teamwork and the effort from these citizens, that's why we were able to make these arrests and seize these guns. That's what needs to happen all the time. So Ms. Deborah Davis was, again, is willing to sell those, those cameras for us to put in other locations, license plate readers. I put those in my upcoming budget for additional license plate readers because most crimes occur on the vehicle. When they fled there, they fled on the vehicle. They didn't go to a, one particular location because we have license plate readers there. They went out a different location. There's no secret where the license plate readers are in town. People see them, they know where they are. Gunshot detections, that day when the shooting happened on Boswell Street, our sensor went off. Which, which I also was being responded in a reasonable time. Because someone who lives on Urbana, Urbana Hill Street heard it and called 911 and tried to send us towards Queen Street because we all know how echoes and sound travels in Edington. Obviously, more cameras in town would obviously help until we, as a community, can step up and say, I'm going to tell what I, what I see. Because we only have the scientific evidence and the, and the video to be able to put them there. And the future system, we met about that here in town. And that was, the future system is a way for citizens to share that video with the police department. So that way now, they don't, we don't have to come to your door and ask you for it. We can automatically log in with your permission and get it, which keeps you from having to go to court. Because now the attorneys can, can, don't have to ask you, did you get this, this video to Chief King? Is it in its entire, whatever the holiday they were, it's, it's the same way you gave it to him. It hasn't been altered or I pulled it and now you're not needed for court.
Chief, do you have to sign up for that program if you're like a private homeowner that has a security system that might be pointed towards the street?
Yes.
Do you have to sign up for that program?
Yes, sir. We would encourage everyone to sign up. It's only as good, Councilman High, as people that sign up for it. But they could sign up for it. They can give us permission to view it live. Or they can give us permission to where we send them a, a quick email and it goes to their phone. Because it's an app to it said, hey, Eden Police Department wants this video footage from this time to this time on this date. And you would automatically send it to them. But again, a lot of these tours in America, what's good for you is expensive and what's bad for you is cheap. Bologna is, is cheap and turkey is expensive. So with that comes a high budget because unfortunately, in order to fight crime, it becomes very expensive in this world and it shouldn't be. Next slide, Tammy. Here's my powerful statement that I would like for everybody to be able to hear.
I'm sorry.
Sheriff Rob Peele, the godfather of law enforcement, blaming the police alone for inequities of the criminal justice system excuses prosecutors, judges, prison systems, healthcare disparities, lack of access to mental health services, and poor education systems. All of these systems contribute to crime and violence in our neighborhoods and the overreliance on police to solve problems that extend way beyond our capacity. Once we accept these basic truths, it will become easier to work together rather than to remain bitterly divided. To demand accountability from the entire criminal justice system rather than just to blame the police and to develop real solutions to our problems instead of superficial responses to the symptoms. Both the police and the community are accountable for public safety. The police must be held accountable and by the community. And the community must be willing to hold itself accountable as well. Now, what I mean by that is we have a Dr. Sasser, our superintendent, is excellent. I speak to him at least two to three times a month on the phone. Alexis Massengill, our ADA for Chauan in Edington. She is one of the best ADAs I've worked with in 25 years. If you give her a case, I promise you, she's going to be the 1972 Dolphins. She's going to the Super Bowl with that case. But going back to that white paper and that circle that I gave you, where I need help from council and the citizens, we need to start meeting. And when I say meeting, the police chief, the sheriff, the head of DSS, the head of probation parole for adults, the head of juvenile probation, Trillium, Alabama Hope Line, community leaders, pastors, clergies, and downtown chambers and businesses willing to give individuals jobs. We need to identify individuals that we see in this video. We need to be able to tell them, we are for, we are, we're here for you, but we're against what you're doing. Give them opportunity to, to, to go down the right path. If not, put them in jail. Simple as that. We giving them a out, but at the same time, it's trying to clean the community up. We can't, the police department can't do it. I am, I am a police chief. I'm not a parent. I cannot, I had a school board member or employee call me just last week asking me to go talk to a kid's parent. And while I appreciated that, I told her I couldn't do that because that's not my job. I, I can't give parental advice. Yes, I'm a parent, but that's not in my will, will house. So we need to look at resources that we have, whether it's through Mitchell Winn or whoever that we have in our community that can step up to the plate and we work together to solve this problem. That is the only way that's going to get solved. We have to meet, we have to clear our schedules, we have to stop making excuses. And we have to get to the table and really make a difference here in Edington. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, one to back.
Yes, sir.
Chief, about how many more cameras do you need?
Well, here's the thing about hotspots. If, I budgeted for 10 cameras. And I'm putting those 10 cameras in the locations where we have blind spots like Boswell Street. Because Boswell Street is a dead end back there.
So I'm looking at the data and I'm.
Looking at where we have most of our problems that since we have other cameras in this location, try to squeeze. Whether it's a camera or license plate.
But cameras, cameras cost, are the good cameras.
The average cost for a camera, the cameras run with the installation and all, it runs about $4,000 per camera. With installation and all. But again, cameras are there, but they don't stop crime. But at least gives us a lead to go off of. But the best, the best lead that we have is these citizens that see something. And in this room, I'm sure everybody, if they saw a crime, would tell it. But we, we need to go out and encourage other members in the community to do the same. And that's where our clergy come in at. Because they have the most, the most, the most people that they can get that message out to in churches, no matter what denomination you are.
Chief, any of these gang members know where these cameras are?
I'm sure they do, Councilman, I'm sure they do.
Okay.
That's your life.
You mentioned earlier that if you want to behave like this, you can go to Plymouth or Hereford or Elizabeth City. At a certain point, if there are enough cameras and they know they're out there, couldn't that be a good thing?
Yes.
Hey, I'm going to take this illegal activity elsewhere.
Absolutely.
When I visited New York, FBI National Academy, I could not believe that we all.
Know how big.
But you can't, you can't go anywhere in New York without being on video somewhere.
Yeah.
Because they have invested into those, those camera systems where they can, and they have.
A real-time crime center where they have people with these huge TV screens that are monitoring, you know, Fifth Avenue or whatever.
Chief, are you putting these cameras in your budget?
Yes.
Good.
Any other questions?
Chief, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Those videos, are you showing us probation and parole so they can look through the faces in terms of whether or not those people are insorting with known felon? I'm sure that's against their probation.
Yes, me and Brian Lewis can talk all the time. And he's aware of all those videos. And that is the reason why it's important to get the table. So again, everybody in this room is very intelligent. If you give, if you give these individuals, you put them on notice, you give them letters, and then you tell them that, hey, you can stop or you can go to jail. If they don't stop, we have proof that we tried to give you help. And all these entities tried to help you out. So now when you commit a crime, now we can submit that to the judge. And the judge should, in my opinion, should get in the max because you tried to, they tried to help you previous to this. You had all these entities willing to help you. Your church, downtown chambers, businesses trying to give you a job. But you chose the, the street life.
Do the schools, I know in Virginia, in high school, they take the kids through a tour of the jail. Do they do that in North Carolina?
Well, it's always, some places do. That's always been, the research has always been kind of mixed about the Scared Street. It all depends on the individual philosophy because the data has shown that it really didn't help kids stay out of trouble.
It scared them for a little bit of time.
Just, just like, just like people have told me, chief, it's because of their circumstances, because of how they grew up. Well, for every time you tell me that, I can show you five, 10 other people that grew up in the same circumstances like myself. Who made it, who parents were strong, who wouldn't allow me to get out there in the street. So I don't use that as an excuse. You have to be willing to do what you want to do when you want to do it. If you want to stop drinking alcohol, you'll stop. If you want to stop using drugs, you'll stop. With the right help.
And chief, one thing to add here that we had shared with council back in the beginning of March. You know, we've explored all the options for assistance that's out there for individuals. And if you remember, chief and I did attend an event with Secretary Buffalo with DPS as well as Governor Cooper for an executive order that will hopefully create an office within the DPS system to help with some of the mental, mental health issues that come from the victims as well as the folks who have maybe caused those crimes. And so, you know, we're, we're right at the forefront again with, with state initiative here to try to gain any resources we can to bring back to northeast North Carolina and Edington. And, you know, chief was so gracious to get us up there so we could sit down with both of those gentlemen and find out how we can be a resource to, to make that office really shine for the, the new DPS system. So, you know, you know, with our local resources that we have here, we're also looking on a state level to see what's new and up and coming that we can get in front of to help some of these folks who may have some type of mental illness or mental disorder or some type of trauma.
Absolutely, boss. The Governor Cooper just appointed me to his task force in Raleigh. I have to go down, not this week, but next week for the first meeting to again, to look at resources that I can bring back to the Human Relations Commission so they can. What, what I'm looking for, or what I believe that we need is someone at the top that can fan these things out. You know, whether it's, I'm just going to say Mitchell Winn, for example. Whether it's his organization that fans things out. If a person needs mental health, then they would, they would send them over here. If a person need parent skills, they would send them over here. But they will follow up and send them where they need to be. And then that way, we all know that people are not being taken advantage of as well, too. You know, somebody's just not collecting a paycheck. They're actually doing what they're supposed to be doing with these citizens that they're trying to help.
And that's just an example of another resource that, that the chief has been working on to try to find additional options to bring back to Edington to help with those type of concerns.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Wait, you have another question over here?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you feel like you have enough police officers?
Ma'am?
I'm explaining something.
To you. I would always love more police officers, but in society, I'm sure everyone's been watching the news. It is very hard to recruit people to become a police officer for various reasons. One, all the hiccups that law enforcement has had over the years. And we have police form, which is not a bad thing, but now they have stretched out their hours. So next year, starting January, based on law enforcement training, it's going to be over 800 something hours. Which, academy is going to be six months. Every police department in this country has three months of field training. So if I hire an employee, I won't see them for almost for nine months before I can actually count them as a person riding around in their car by themselves. You know, and we're blessed. I have three openings now. But a lot of, you know, not to say anything negative by any other agency, but a lot of agents are 25 officers, 50 officers down. So we're, I mean, the, the whole police, law enforcement in general is, is hurting. And that, and that sometimes could be, we have somebody like, you know, in my eyes, every police officer should live in Edington. But guess what? Some of our houses are very expensive.
So it's kind of hard to have an officer living in town on an officer's salary.
But maybe working with assistant manager, Duane over here, in reference to HU, the finding homes, the officer next door program, fire fighting next door. And then we can encourage people to come here, officers to come here, and then they have reduced rent or they have free rent. But the free rent comes in the fashion of they're patrolling that neighborhood on their days off. There are so many different ways, but we have to be able to find it and apply for it. And have to have the houses that are available to do those programs well.
Okay, chief, thank you so very much for this information. And we are trying to do the best we can with it. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, the next thing on our is our committee reports. And the first one is the administrative committee, and that's chaired by Councilman High.
Thank you, Mayor Stallings. I'm pleased to report we've got a minimal agenda tonight as far as administrative committee. We only have one item, and that is a review of our town council meeting procedures. Corey and Duane and staff have been working hard on that. It's been quite a while since we've taken a look at that. And I'm going to hand it off to Corey to explain what we've been doing in that regard and also the major changes to our procedures.
And, and thank you, Councilman High, for that. We did discuss this earlier today. That was tabled at the last meeting because of some of us being at the conference. We're continuing to work on that. We have received some revision requests. We've also been working on some internal revision requests that we had saw. At this time, there's really no action needed. And what I recommend is that we put this back on our agenda to go through the full two-meeting cycle and that we continue to work on it through our committee meeting next time to share those revisions. And then do a formal vote at our next regular meeting in May. So that's where we are.
So you're suggesting that we leave it tabled at this time?
Yes, sir.
And that's a work on some of the recent revision requests we've received?
Yes.
And like I said, Mayor Stallings, it's been a while since we've reviewed that. We want to make sure we get it right. And we certainly want to keep it on the agenda, but there's certainly no rush. We want to get it right.
Right.
So, Mayor, I promised a short report, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, sir. And the next is a finance committee, and that's chaired by Councilman Dixon.
And I think we got even shorter reports. $12,364.78 back from the, from a joint police task force, thanks to Chief King. I think we went over that while we were in Boston. And I'll put that in the motion.
Set mood.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. And the next is the Public Works Committee, and that's chaired by Councilman Miller.
Mayor, our items are a little longer than the other two. Just want to say, as thoroughly discussed at our March 27 Council Committee meeting, all four of our Public Works Committee items pertain to public works-related increases. These fee increases are to become effective May the 1st. The town's Public Works Director, David Myers, was in attendance at our last meeting when you guys were at the conference, and he answered a lot of our questions at that time. Now getting into the individual items, water and sewage tap fees, due to the increased costs and maintenance materials to provide this maintenance service, the Public Works Director has requested an increase in water and sewer tap opening service fees. I would like to put that in the form of motion to increase these fees according to his request. So, I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
I have a question. So, are these the new fees right here, or are these the current fees?
Those are the, there was a request made for the itemized cost associated with these fees. I met with David today to go over these. I wanted to share these with council. And just one thing to note, even with this increase, we're still upwards of $600 short for what these are. So, we're just trying to cushion some of that with this increase that was presented, but it still holistically does not reflect the true cost of the town for the installation of either type of tap.
For the purposes of getting a further discussion, I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to ask, Mayor Jacob wanted to follow up on what he just said. It's my understanding that right now we're losing money on these things. And we're not trying to make money off of it, and we're not even really trying to break even, but we're trying to cushion the deficit that we have. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And when we, when we look at these fees, you know, this ripple has been felt from PD needs, from fire needs, from the electric department needs. I know we've made some revisions there, particularly with us, the, the pricing around construction materials. When you consider PVC and any type of brass or any type of metal, which most of these are, have grown up exponentially. We're, we're just trying to cushion that. We're not trying to, you know, net zero these charges, just trying to get a little closer and to let the difference be made up by any type of water sewer rates. And so, this is one of the, one of the final things we hope to, to move higher. I know that we've done that with some other rates. And like I said, I wanted to share the itemized cost, depending on the size, that we have here for the group. So, yes, this does not cover all of that, but it gets us closer.
Do some communities charge what it costs? I mean, is that a, so, what's the general rule?
The general rule is, is to recoup just over half of what your typical costs are and to let the service make up the difference.
Any further discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I see you got rock and sand and asphalt repair. When there's repair work done to the streets and stuff, the customer or the street owner, the house owner pays, pays for that?
No, sir. It's, it's all included in the tap fee. This is just showing the cost of the material for public works to do the repair work. Typically, you don't have this problem with a water meter commonly, but when you do like a sewer tap, most of the sewer manholes are in the middle of the street. So, there's some backfill, and then there's also some paving repairs that have to be made just for the utility patch. And that's what those, those two items represent.
And for clarity, this is generally for like a new build, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's important.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Mayor, the number two, number two item, garbage rate addition, small waste commercial restaurant. Public Works Director recommends that a small waste commercial restaurant rate of $56 per month be established to cover sanitation services for those particular smaller restaurants in town using trash can containers. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this garbage rate addition recommendation of $56 a month for small restaurants.
Second? We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Mayor, number three item, garbage rate removal for the one, two, and six yard dumpsters. Currently, since there are no customers in town utilizing these small dumpsters, Public Works Director recommends that town remove dumpster services for these small dumpsters and that the current rate be approved for billing use. Make a motion, we approve the removing, removing the garbage rate for the one, two, and six yard dumpsters.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And last, mayor, boat pump-out fee increase. Public Works Director recommends the boat pump-out fee be increased from $5 to $25 for all boaters. Town administrative staff agrees that this new rate better reflects a more accurate rate for this particular service. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the boat rate pump-out fee from $5 to $25.
I didn't realize that was an item, that it was available. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I just wanted to get an idea. How many, how often does this take place? How many boats a month require this service?
Well, most of the services are provided during the spring, summer, and early fall season, typically when our marina is open. It, it doesn't happen often. We're just small enough that most of the boats that come in have enough capacity to do this elsewhere. When you talk about cleaning out, you know, any, any gray or wastewater. And so, it's, it's not very common that it, that it's used. And just to put this in perspective, we just replaced this pump-out station and just the station alone without the installation of the guys from Public Works was $15,000.
Do we know what our neighbors are charging that have those facilities?
And when I spoke with David about this, that's what he had done. He had looked within our region and other marinas to see what this type of service-
This is more in line.
And this was more in line with what, you know, you would see at any other type of marina or like at a, an RV-style pump-out at like a campground. This is pretty standard across the board.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Mayor, that's all for Public Works.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, next, we move on to new business, the Fair Housing Proclamation. And I'll read this, and then we'll turn it over to Dwayne for comment. The Town of Eden, North Carolina Proclamation, Fair Housing Month, which is April of 2023, whereas April 2023 marks the 55th anniversary of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, known as the Civil Rights Fair Housing Act, and, whereas this act provides equal housing opportunity for all Americans regardless of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin, as well as to ensure fair practice in the sale, rental, or financing of property. And whereas the Fair Housing Amendment Act of 1988 added new rights, remedies, monetary penalties, and strengthened its enforcement procedures. And whereas the Fair Housing Amendment Act seeks to provide equal housing opportunities to affirmatively further housing choices, to eliminate legal barriers to equal housing, and to emphasizes equal housing as a fundamental human right for all. And whereas individuals in the town have the right to choose where to live without discrimination based on race, color, religion, age, sex, disability, gender identity, or familial status or national origin. And, whereas the Town of Eden fully supports the intent and purpose of the Federal Fair Housing Act and local fair housing laws, and follows policies and practices in order to achieve its goal. Now, therefore, I, Jimmy Stallings, mayor of the Town of Eden, do hereby proclaim April 2023 in Edenton, North Carolina, as Fair Housing Month, this 11th day of April 2023.
Thank you, Mayor Stallings. This was a requirement for the Fair Housing Month for our CBDG grant. So, you're reading that basically as a proclamation stating that fulfilling a requirement from the federal and state entities that are distributing these funds. So, I appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you. Do we need to take it for an actual moment? Okay. Okay, the next is our Auditor Proposal. Thompson, Price, and Scott have been our auditor for the last three years, and we have to approve the use of that for the next three years. So, you sent out several letters, and they were the only ones that responded back. Is that correct?
Virginia did. She had sent out RFP for this, and they're on a three-year annual term. We sent out solicitations for professional services for every auditor's office within four hours. The only proposal that we received was, again, from the Thompson, Price, Scott, and Adams group. If you remember, they just recently presented our fiscal year 22 slash 23 audit back in February. And the request tonight is, based on Virginia and I's discussions, is that council approve the use of this group for another three-year term. Virginia, did I miss anything?
The process structure is the same as it was the previous time. I did reach out to Kathy at the family, who says they also use the same auditor. Did she have any other feedback from her RFP? And she said that she received two, one from this group, and then there was one other that was $75,000. But the family also let them to use Thompson, Price, and Adams.
Okay. All right, hearing all of that, I will accept a motion to give our business to Thompson, Price, Scott, and Adams.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
One question, Mayor. I think they were late getting started last year or late completing the audit. Do we have any understanding that getting started on time so that we're not late in returning the information to the state?
And, and we shared that with them from the last time that we were under contract with them, and there have been about two different corrections that we've addressed with them, and that was one of them.
So, that seems like that's a running problem that we have with almost every auditor we've had, is they're late getting it in. Can't answer why, but...
Mayor Stallings, I think one thing that I have seen across the state is fewer, fewer accounting firms are interested during this type of work.
Yeah.
So, the ones that do do it are in high demand, not making excuses for. But I think the fact that we only received one proposal-
Yeah, that tells you something. Okay, any other further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Okay, the next is our Police Officer Physical Aptitude Test Policy. And Corey, I'll-
And I'm glad the chief's here in case there are any additional questions. What we have presented tonight is a physical aptitude test for our police officers to maintain a sense of fitness and wellness. This incentive is a $500 annual bonus. There are two parts to this. However, those two parts are staggered over a four-month integral. So, it appears to be more than what it is, but it, it's just the way the cycle plays. We have had this as an established practice for the last couple of years. I know that it's one of the first things the chief has brought forward to the police department. There's been a little bit of delay on getting this back to council for approval. We really wanted to try to test the waters. We've seen the success in this. What we're requesting tonight is for us to officially adopt this policy for the police department. But as we spoke about earlier today, I think because of the success, one of the things that the police chief, Tammy and Virginia and I, have spoke about is that we should look for more broad policy for some type of fitness and wellness for all of our employees, to offer some type of incentive like this. And so, and hopefully, near future, we'd like to bring something back to encourage all of our workers to, to take part in some wellness program. And I think we will likely get that from our insurance provider. There will probably be a lot of options there. This is one that we know we need. We want our officers fit. We want them to be able to perform if they choose to take part, and I do recommend that council approve this policy.
Other than, other neighboring communities, you've seen the same policy, chief?
Yes, I, I looked at Wake Forest, I looked at Raleigh. There were a lot of agencies, and they, actually their price was higher. But what I decided to do was make it voluntary. And if you choose to take it, you have to pass it three times a year. Have to pass it in March, June, and September, and then the money's rewarded until you're in November.
Does this help with the career ladder, too, in the, in the police department?
Yes.
These people getting involved in this, you're gonna look at them.
It helps with the career ladder, but it also helps drive our insurance down because my officers are at work if they're not getting hurt because they're keeping themselves in shape, and they're making the great decisions when they are faced with chasing someone and, and the brain is functioning, and they're getting oxygen to their brain to be able to make those right decisions.
Is this something that are going to affect with the next budget, or?
So, if you don't mind, boss, I'll answer that question. So, councilman, I looked at my budget, and pretty much based on the guys and ladies that was volunteering, it would, in my physical, in my physical fitness line item, or my psychological line item, it didn't, it wasn't depleted at all. Obviously, one day I want all 18, to include myself, to take the test.
Gotcha.
But right now, I'm averaging about four people, and five including me, that's actually taking it. I'm trying to, when there's some of the new officers out that I hired, probably are gonna take the test.
Gotcha. So, it's coming out of the existing budget?
Yes, it's coming out of the budget. We're not adding any money to it.
Any further questions, or chief, or Corey? Hearing none. Let's see. The last one. Have we got a motion? No. Okay.
I make the motion, we accept.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. All right, the next is the North Carolina League of Municipalities' City Vision for 2023 Travel Request. And we've got four people that we've approved to go to this, and Corey, you wanna?
Yes, sir. So, thankfully, we were able to get this in in time. We missed it at our last meeting. The North Carolina League of Municipalities 2023 City Vision Conference is in Concord, April 25 through April 27 this month. We have been in discussion around this for quite some time now, once we had the announcement dates. We've elected to, to allow four representatives from the town to go. I know when we originally spoke, there were certain individuals that we had originally wanted to send. I don't know if that's changed. So, tonight, the request is, is for council to approve the town to send four because due to some conflicts, some of the original representatives that we wanted to go may not be able to attend, but we still would like to have a nice, strong presence there for the league conference.
Where is that at, again?
It's in Concord.
Concord. Okay, you can put that in form of a motion. We need a motion. We have a motion in a second. Do you have a question?
I have a motion.
Oh, okay. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Okay, and the next is a proclamation for the Society of the Descendants of Designers of- of the Declaration of Independence. And I'll read the proclamation, and then Cory, you can explain it a little further. Whereas the Society of the Descendants of Designers of the Declaration of Independence will hold their National Spring Meeting in the Town of Eden on April 21st through the 23rd, 2023. And whereas the society composed of the direct lineal descendants of the 56 men who signed the Declaration on July 4th, 1776 in Philadelphia will gather at the 1767 Chauvin County Courthouse. And whereas during their stay, they will tour the town's historic district, including important sites such as the Penelope Barker House, the Cupolo House, and Beverly Hall, and will visit historic sites in Chauvin County such as Hayes and Mulberry Hill, and will attend Sunday services at the Eden's Historic St. Paul's Episcopal Church. And whereas they will install a commemorative brass plaque at 325 South Broad Street in honor of Eden's signer, Joseph Hughes. And whereas the society was founded in 1907 to strengthen in American life the principles set forth in the Declaration of Independence and to perpetuate the memory of those men who, in signing the Declaration, mutually pledged their lives, their fortunes, and their sacred honor in the cause of liberty. And whereas among these brave men were the three North Carolina signers, William Hooper of Wilmington, John Penn of Granville County, and the aforementioned Joseph Hughes of Eden. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jimmy Stallings, Mayor of the Town of Eden, do hereby extend to the members of the Society of the Descendants of Designers of the Declaration of Independence warmest greetings as you meet in Eden, and extend my very best wishes for a successful and enjoyable meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. There is no action required. I was very honored to work with the executive director from the Eden Historic Commission, Robert Lee, on getting this. This is the first time that this group has visited and held their national meeting in Eden since the early 90s. And after our conversation today, the mayor and I would like to present this proclamation to that group when they're here during their visit. And if you noted also in your agenda packet, I included the itinerary because they extended a welcome invitation for the mayor and council to join them as they, as time permits. And...
I tell you, we have, we have one of the descendants spending some time with us, and they are really excited about coming to Eden. And they thank Sambo for opening up his home at that time, too, so...
Okay, the next item is the Hotel Hinton update, and I'll call on Cory for that, please.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I felt the need to provide some type of update to the general public on this. So I wanted to share a couple of things around the Hotel Hinton project. I know that there was a public meeting within the last 30 days in which Saga did have a representative show up, you know, quite conveniently at that same time. Some of the cleanup efforts that we had requested back in January had taken place. I also wanted to share with the group that last week, I spoke with the Chauvin County Inspections Office, and electrical permit has been pulled. We're finally able to secure an electrician to get power back to the building for some additional perimeter lighting, as well as interior lighting, as well as some of the camera needs that we have spoken about for the structure. I've also spoken with the local representative from Eden Construction regarding the last question around some of the fencing to secure the back. He has received the proposal for that work, and they do plan on doing that soon. He didn't give me a definite date, but this will make the third request that we had near satisfaction. And so I wanted to share that. I've also had conversations last week, or the week before while we were in Boston with the town attorney, talking about the town's legal options. He did assure me that he had written guidance together that was almost complete as far as how we approach the Saga entity or the folks from Preservation North Carolina on what our option are as a municipality going forward. I hope to have that soon so we can sit down and have a discussion, Dwayne and I, with the Saga representatives on how we plan to proceed. I did also want to share with the general public, we did personally sit down and have a nice two-hour meeting with Urban Henderson while we were at the Boston National Main Street Conference. He is the project lead for Saga for the new market tax credits. I think it was a very raw and very frank and very candid discussion. I think that the mayor and Councilman Ha and Councilman Dixon had a very good conversation with him about their plans and where they are. It was, it was an opportunity for us to basically share with Saga what it is that they need to do in Eden. And it was kind of one of those rubber meets the road conversations that was very, very to the point. One thing to share with the general public is, based on our conversations with Mr. Henderson, is that they are as close to obtaining the new market tax credits as they ever been. He also shared that as part of the requirements of this is that rural communities were included in this round of funding, and that's upwards of 15% to 20% of these credits that have to be mandated to rural areas, with us being a tier-one county within the state. That's very promising. And overall, I think that it was, it was very positive to, to the group of us to have that discussion with him. Mayor, Councilman Ha, I don't know if there's anything from that conversation I missed that you'd like to add, but I felt the need to share those few talking points with the general public.
I feel like we told them that we would take all steps that we could to push them along.
Yeah.
That we were waiting on this memo from Hood to tell us exactly what we couldn't do. And once he says, here's what you can do, then we're gonna probably take all those steps. And I think, I think, although if we're siding on that, I think that they know that that's coming.
Yeah. And I have sent a follow-up email with Mr. Henderson since we've gotten back to schedule a follow-up meeting, hopefully with the intent to share those, that legal guidance from the town attorney.
And I thought we were very fortunate to get that time to spend with him, individual time with him. We spent probably a couple of hours with him, and I think it was very, very informative and very helpful.
Yeah. Question. Is, are the tax credits the only thing holding them back from getting started? I mean, once they get the tax credits, are they committed to getting going, or are there other issues that have to be addressed?
At this point, the only thing that has been shared with us was the tax credit concern.
I think the tax credit piece is gonna make it more attractive to investors and/or lenders. So it's not the only piece, but it's the building block and foundation. But, but we, we did let him know in no uncertain terms that council and the public at large was, was tired of talk, and we need to see some action now. However, we also stated that although we're tired of talk, we also need more talk in a way. We need more communication. We need more transparency from them because the lack of information and lack of, call it honesty or transparency from them, causes all of us, council and townsfolk, to be more skeptical of what they're doing and not doing. And that led us to the conversation of him committing to coming and making some sort of presentation within the next 45 days or so, where he could share some of the things that he talked to us about to the general public, and also some more things. And if we can receive more information and feel good about it, and there's more transparency, then that can only help us. But that talk and that transparency is only gonna do that so far because we did let him know that it's time we need to see some action.
Yeah.
And there are two types of credits. One is the preservation tax credit, which is, you just, you don't really have to go like yet, you just do the work, and then it's automatic. There's something called a new market.
Right.
It comes, which is the big one, which comes through a lot, and it helps that there's entities that get those, and then they give them out. And then if you get that, that's when the financing piece is much easier to obtain.
Yeah.
And Councilman Dixon, is there any legislation or any proposals for change to up that credit to as high as 30% for rural areas?
They're trying, they're trying that. But they're, he is looking in the right places. That's what he does. Who should I hear back to? I think there's things on or involving, schedule.
Well, it was very informative, and he was upfront with us, I think, but it's, it's a timely process. So, okay, we good with that? All right, next is our items considered timely and important. Does anybody up here have anything that they feel like you'll need to share with the rest of us?
I do. Cory, where do we stand with the ARPA funds, the disbursement of some of those projects, or getting them going, rather?
Any particular one section of funding?
I guess we can start with the parks. I think that's what took up majority or recreation piece. It took up a majority of our funds.
So at this time, we are supposed to have a meeting with the folks from SF Network to go in further detail about some of the options that were presented. We have quite a list of questions to go through. We want to make sure we go about this thing the, the correct way. At this time, other than some of the planning costs associated with water access, no funds have been spent.
Right.
And, and we are under a strict timeline with those, with the state and the federal government that, that gave those. So it's, it's gonna be one of those times when it goes, it goes quickly. But at this point, we haven't gotten the final approved version that we'd like to share with council back on some of the site recommendations.
Gotcha. So SF Network, it was five weeks for the first turnaround, is that correct?
Yeah. And so we have gotten an initial draft back, and we're having a follow-up call with them Friday at 3:00.
Gotcha. We being...
Dwayne and I, we'll go through some of the, the financial questions and some of the, the items that they brought forward to try to, to share, to try to implement with us as far as needs and what's out there, and what's really gonna make these neighborhood parks world-class.
Gotcha. So are we still forming a committee for that?
Yes, that is part of the second phase, is the public input. I've shared that with some of the residents. We've, we've got a pretty good list of stakeholders together, and that was for the initial gap analysis. But we did share with folks who have been interested in this that we would be glad to get them on board as part, part of the community engagement when we start looking at each of these parks, but we're just not quite there yet.
And these are five parks, right? Five, Morgan, Stratford, Griffin, Paxton, and Beelke?
Yes.
Okay.
What's the likelihood of putting it in the next budget to go ahead and start?
Virginia and I are gonna try to get everything we can. Currently, our 10-640 accounts do have some budgeting that's there. If you remember, when we approved the budget amendment for all the ARPA funding, those were put into a capital project fund. So they, regardless of budget cycle, they continue to carry until the money is spent. So, you know, us having a July 1 deadline is, is, is not, you know, lingering above us. I mean, we, we have multiple years to spend that.
Gotcha.
Now, what we would hope to do is have everything together for any additional items that are needed to make any increases that we have now for our neighborhood parks for any type of, you know, differences we may have.
Okay.
So we will include some of that in the July 1, 23 budget, but the ARPA funds are completely separate from that.
Okay.
And Cory, for the dog lovers, we're looking at a dog park possibly within one of those parks, or...
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir.
One concern, Mayor, I've had several people express frustration at trying to cross Virginia Road between Food Line, Granville, and Walgreen CVS, and also in front of the school. If you turn the light at Granville and Virginia Road, it's about seven seconds, which means you gotta walk pretty fast, be in pretty good shape to get across the street at, at that rate. And the other day, I was coming down head of South on Broad, and I had to stop in front of the fire station because a family had got caught in the middle of the street trying to cross, and there's no crosswalk there, and no way to get across to the, to the Red Apple. I, I suggest that if possible, that we ask the state, I know these are both state roads, if there's some way they could help us out with a study that would make it possible for pedestrians to cross, to go to Food Line, or, or to get to Morris Circle, or get to North Eden, the neighborhoods that get to be almost islands with the current system.
And I need to follow up with them to find out. We shared both of those locations on Virginia Road, as well as the ones for the high school, more specifically the ones with, or more recently, the one with the high school because of the Broad Street contract being let for the paving there. But we've also shared with them, there's been some additional needs in two places. One in front of Calogs there on Queen Street, as well as at the intersection of Twitty and Queen. There are two areas there that there's a gap. We've sent them visual aids of maps with photos of that. I need to reach back out to them and see if there's, is it gonna be part of a paving project? Is it part of some of their ADA improvements that they make? They kind of show up, they kind of show up unannounced, and the next thing you know, they're replacing sections of sidewalk and adding ADA mats along Granville Street. And it's like, you know, so, but we did share those five locations with them, specifically with the gentleman who's in charge of the ADA program, to try to get those crosswalks established. Second piece of that is particularly with the ones at these intersections with traffic lights. We do need to have a conversation with their traffic division about increasing some of those times if those are added. But I'm sure DOT would be well aware of the length of a crosswalk versus the time needed for light delay. I'm sure it's something they can map out for us, and I'll be glad to follow up with you all.
Have any, have you more from DOT on the Broad Street reserving? I know you mentioned earlier, they've got 18 months to do anything, is there...
Nothing, nothing new to report.
Okay.
We found that out in early March, that that project had let, just like we spoke about finding employees to do the work, or contractors to do the work, they extended their contract terms up to 18 months versus their typical 12-month cycle.
When would that 18 months be?
It should have started March 1st.
Okay, okay.
2023, so. And, and we're getting in paving season, and we do have contacts with most of the contractors to do this type of work. So we have shared with them, please let us know when you're deciding, hey, we're coming to Eden.
Okay. You're talking about those seven or eight roads that we needed.
Yeah. And, and it's, and I'm glad you brought up paving. I did want to share one thing. I actually have two items considered timely and important. I spoke with David Myers today from Public Works. The paving that we had originally requested, Granby, Valentine, Albania, West Eden, and West Church, weather permitting, will start next week.
Okay.
And so each of the four consecutive weeks after that, the contractor will be in for our round...
When you say West Church, you're talking about the 300 block of West Church, okay?
Yes, yes.
Or other streets again, I'm sorry?
Next week, we should see activity on Granville, Granby, Valentine, Albania, West Eden, and then West Church.
Gotcha.
And they will have three more additional weeks after that, where they will come in with a certain selected roads and start paving those. They're trying to take out a week at a time.
If there's any remaining money, can we look at that, that East Queen Street 100 block?
Yes, that was shared.
That is horrible.
Yep, yep.
If you got, if you got any money left, I'd like to get some, some sidewalks and curbing.
For any of your old offices.
And some section in the 4th Ward, because we need them bad.
I think we need to do that.
Yeah. And we have, the, the first step for us is identifying everywhere that we don't have them. I agree with you 100%. I've already asked David to go ahead and start inventorying all of our streets, particularly since we're in paving mode, to identify which locations need curbing gutter and which locations need sidewalk. As soon as I have an idea, I think we'll see at least a piece of this budgeted for sidewalk improvements for our July 1, which we typically do each year. But I, I would like to try to see that increase for new additions versus just repair.
Walker Street is still on that... Walker Street is still on that list, correct? Walker?
Yes, yes.
Like what Councilman Bond just said, I get a lot of calls and comments from his ward about that very issue.
Where is Walker Street?
Walker's next to Gandhi's new expansion storage.
Okay.
But yes, it is on the list. It will be taken care of in one of these four, four one-week increments.
So for Valentine, I know we discussed widening it, are they still looking at doing that?
Yes, yes.
Anything else further up here?
One other thing I'd like to announce also is that.
Chief, would you bring me that clipboard out in the hall there?
We did, we did extend an offer and acceptance for our PIO position and I wanted to share that with the council.
That's Public Information Officer position?
Yes, sir. With Mayor, Council, and the general public. And we were fortunate in regards that.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
We did actually hire Tyler Newman from the formerly with the Cho One Herald. He will start Monday with the town with this newly created position. A lot of, a lot of the department heads, as well as our nonprofit organizations that we partner with are very excited about this, really for community engagement, keeping folks informed holistically what the town is doing. And so we look forward to starting that the 17th of this month.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, if there's nothing further up here, we'll go to the public comment. And remember, we have a three-minute limit on that. John Grant is the first one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, I would like to ask Council's indulgence for a few extra minutes, I have some things to hand out real quick. And I've had some notations in them to ensure that I don't speak any longer than absolutely necessary. But I do have a couple of questions. The town manager, based on his presentation earlier before I spoke, he said that they were going to start, like, work on the electric.
Yes.
Do you have any idea when they're going to start that?
I do not. I know that the permit was pulled and so typically you won't do that until you're ready to start work. And I know that was pulled last week.
And the permits are good for how long?
One-year window on all building permits and electrical, plumbing, HVAC, and mechanical.
All right. And somebody's going to inspect all that before they actually turn it on?
Yes, yes.
And my other question was, you indicated that they were going to start putting up the fence?
Yes.
Was that approved through the Historical Commission, Preservation?
No, it's, it's going to be a construction-style fencing.
Okay. All right. As you all recall, the last couple of times I've talked, I've asked the town to take steps and for Saga to do something about the Hinton. And I realized as I was going through some things that the Hinton's not the only building we have in town that's subject to these types of rules and regulations, or should be anyway. The Sears Building downtown has a broken window up top, it's been broken forever. That one shopping center out, going out of town, has been vacant and derelict for quite some time and something should really be done with that. So based on the fact that you all had asked what could be done, I did a little research on my own. So the first thing I provided to you is some town ordinances and North Carolina general statutes that I think could apply. I'm not going to go into them in great detail, other than to note that the Hinton doesn't have anything on at all, so there's no trespassing. So I mean, technically, I could walk in there if the door's open and just walk around because nothing says we can't. And we've constantly had to call Police Department as, I don't know if Council is aware, but someone opened up the window and the doorway to the Hinton again this weekend on Sunday. And the police were called on Monday and I don't think these police officers need to keep going and be in the security force for Saga. So I think these are ordinances that are already on the books that can be utilized to enforce both the Hinton and other properties in this area to fight the blight that is slowly creeping into this town and needs to be taken care of. And the other form that I provided to you is the, I don't know if council members were ever go to one of the breakout sessions recently at one of the town meetings for the downtown areas, but they, the town of Warrington has ordinances which they have put in place to ensure the protection, especially of historic buildings. And I would strongly encourage Town Council to review those ordinances and incorporate and if necessary, modify them into our own so that we can ensure that we protect both property and the people of this town.
What town was that? Can you say that again?
Warrington, North Carolina. And I will be honest, I basically, I may have modified the opening section a little bit, but the ordinances, for the most part, are cut and pasted right out of their town ordinances. So that should have the proper legal language necessary. And I know you said that the town attorney has done some research and done some things he thinks, and so I don't know if this is a duplication of effort, but if not, I would hope that it would be used together to do this. Do any council members have any questions in regards to these ordinances?
Thank you, Jay. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you for making available.
Absolutely. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. The next is Patrick Nablo.
First of all, I just want to say thank you to Chief King. I have respect, all that you're doing, and appreciate it greatly. Which is a great, tough job, but it's a great segue. I wouldn't be up there speaking if a year ago, that building wasn't entered by gang members. I say that because of my location. I'm a retailer located across the street. I live across the street. I watched them go in last summer, went over and spoke to them. I will not repeat in front of you what they said to me, but they had the red and they had the blue on. They're here. We know they're here. So location, location, location is everything. I was encouraged this week, however, Corey, and everybody that went to the meeting, they put the CAD drawings in the windows. I don't know if anybody's had the chance to go over and see them, but they're there. And because of that, I had to just ask a few questions. If you look at the addition, the drawings are very small, but they talk about the renovation and the addition. Take a look at the addition. It does not match the front building in any way, shape, or form. So I thought, well, who are these architects? Gordon and Greenberg. Well, who are they? So I did a little research, checked into them. They're not from here. I've seen Dawson's CAD drawings, they're a whole lot better than what I'm seeing over there. So I called Gordon and Greenberg. Couldn't get a hold of them, so I went online. If you Google Gordon and Greenberg, they come up. But if you tap on that little window on Google, they don't have an office. They're not there. They'll answer the phone, but they won't answer your emails. So yesterday, I called just to inquire about the addition. I'm concerned because of parking and I didn't know the addition was going to be added and I wanted to know, does the entrance then move to the other side of the building? Spoke with Robert Greenberg. He told me, absolutely, we're going, I'll send you a PDF. Send me your email and I'll shoot you a picture of what that west-side elevation looks like. Well, this morning, I received an email from Scott Greenberg. And what that stated was, release of the elevations will have to be directed by Saga. I'm not going to say anything. I would like to, but I can't, so we're passing it around again. Or by the owner of the project, Bob Househair. I didn't know he owned Saga. That's a new one to me. So the architect's telling me something I'm not clear on. The other part of this that is very compelling to me is that, and no offense to what you guys learned in Boston, but current proposed elevations are, and this is a quote, are currently under review by Historic and are a long, long way from being finalized. That's your architect. That's what's on that building in that location. I'll just say this, no offense intended, if that building was located on West King Street or locations down from Broad, we wouldn't be talking about this tonight. If something's got to, somebody's got to check these people, somebody's got to vet these people, they're not local. That gentleman over there is local. And that's what I trust. I just don't, there's too many red flags that just keep going up with Saga. So I hope, as you're talking and dealing with all the powers from PNC and Saga, we've had four architects' drawings that we've seen. Who's their architect? And why are they not from here? That's my concern. If it was local, I'd have a sense that it's under control. I think something's not right. Just wanted to express my views. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And next is Kip Shaw.
Thanks, but I'm sorry to speak to you. Couple of questions first. Manager Gooden, is there any internal security system in the Hinton?
Not to my knowledge.
Have you, in your discussions with them, have you recommended that?
Yes.
And had they made a commitment?
That was part of the conversations around getting the electrical reinstalled for some type of system like that to be in place.
Have they made a commitment to a security system?
No, not at this point.
Okay. Why not?
I don't know.
I'm sure that all of you have, or most of you probably have, security systems in your house. Am I correct on that?
Some do, yeah.
Okay. And I'm sure most of you have fire insurance. In fact, you probably have to have fire insurance. Your houses are, the footprint of your house and elevation in each of your houses, even Beverly, is a lot smaller than Hinton. And we have proof that gangs are going in there. And I'm so glad that Chief King showed us those because those were chilling, chilling, absolutely chilling. And that's going on, most likely, in the Hinton because it's been broken into, and I'm sure they're not having church meetings in there. We need to demand, and I don't use that word lightly, that Saga immediately puts an internal security system in there with the following items. Lights, connection to the Police Department, collection, connection to the Fire Department, sprinklers. And I'm saying this because if you look at the satellite picture of Edington and you look at where the Hinton is and how big it is relative to the rest of the downtown, and you look at the prevailing winds that come off the bay, if those gangs get in there and we have evidence they certainly are smoking, and they start a fire, and that breaks through that roof before the Fire Department can show up, those embers will descend on the downtown and they will descend on the wooden shingles of our most cherished historic structure right next door. Not only will this devastate the town and the businesses, but it will ruin Edington's claim to being a wonderful place to come visit. Can you imagine what it would look like? Main Street burned to the ground, the courthouse burned to the ground. Where are these people from the relatives of the Declaration of Independence? Where is the Supreme Court going to meet? They can't meet because the building will be gone. Not only would that be a tragedy for Edington, but what would happen to our tax base? It would disappear. It's time to act. All I hear is, you've had very good conversations. I heard that in January, I heard that in February. This has been eight years. I think it's time for some actions to take place because there is a tragedy waiting to happen there, whether it be gunfire, overdoses, fire. And it's your responsibility to preserve and protect and defend our community. You've taken an oath. And we are asking you to act. Thank you.
Hasn't Edington Construction told you they're going to take measures to block that off, to put screws through the door that they can't get in?
Yep.
This type of thing?
Yep. So I've had weekly conversations with Edington Construction about the repairs that are needed to try to get this thing secured. And Mr. Shaw, just one thing to add here, you know, I would like to think that we've had more conversations and more meetings with them to try to pursue legal or financial improvements for that structure than we've had historically. So I don't want you to think that we're taking this lightly. And from day one, you know, this has been something that's been a priority for me. And these things take time and I.
It's been eight years.
Understood.
And I think there's a good chance that someone's talking the talk.
This still is a matter, isn't it? I said, this still is a matter, isn't it? Okay, next on the list is Lori Nablo.
Well, here's a surprise. I'm here to talk about the Hotel Hinton, too, again. I sure want to thank all of you who came to the community meeting. Thank you for being there willingly and wholeheartedly and for listening to the public. That was, I think that was a great event. We had somewhere between 100 and 200 people, really smart people in this town and really great resources. A lot of people are coming from some really beneficial experiences and they can add a lot to the discussion. While we might not have had the answers that we wanted from the Saga representative or the support that we should be able to depend on from Preservation North Carolina for our community, I hope that this didn't feel like a bump in the road to any of you or an inconvenience or gripe session. I hope that instead, it looks like it might be a pretty good forum to use for all different kinds of things where you would like to reach out to the citizens of this area and get their input as to what they need for infrastructure. Maybe they could help not have eight to 10 empty store buildings on Broad at any given time. If we maybe reached out to the public and talked to them about what kind of businesses they would support, what they'd like to see in the mix, instead of being told what's coming in and we'll hope for the best with all of them. So today, we've collected approximately 1,200 signatures. Our plan is to do a final count next week and to present those to Mayor Coward. We will also follow that up with an awareness campaign to make sure that the other members that sit on the Board of Preservation North Carolina are actually aware of what's happening here in Edington. You know, what I've heard today, we are still allowing Saga to craft the narrative. We're still talking about the trouble that they're having getting their funding. It is time for Edington to be ready for primetime. We've got a ferry coming in very soon. We have visitors coming in now and it is so haphazard here. We've got half of our buildings open for business and the other half aren't on Broad. I don't think there's an understanding of what retailers need in this town to be successful. We have a haze plantation open. That's wonderful. That's going to bring people in, but we aren't ready for primetime. And part of the reason we're not ready for primetime is because we partner with people like Saga, because we don't vet them, because we're not taking advantage of the commercial bankers, the venture capitalists, the investment expertise that is in this community. Rick Masters, I know he's going to appreciate me calling him out. Kevin Stevenson, Bill Witcher. There are so many folks here that could help you. Witcher. There are so many folks here that could help you, could augment your professional experience in vetting prospective investors, especially when you're talking about somebody who's going to buy a historic building and turn it in ostensibly into a hotel and rehabilitate it. You need that input from the public, and I want to urge you to do that and stop letting Saga or Irvin Henderson, in all due respect, craft this discussion. They have neglected that building for eight years. I haven't heard a word about that. Not a word of apology, not a word of remorse. I haven't heard Preservation North Carolina utter a word about any of that either. We've just been left with the mess, and it is time to change the conversation. It is time to hold Saga and PNC accountable for what they have done. Chief King has to send his folks out about three times a week now because the windows are broken and the doors are open, and on and on. He's got a lot of better things to do, and so does his staff. And yet, that's what we're stuck with, and that's what we've inherited from Saga. I don't know what it is that makes you all so optimistic that after eight years of mistreatment, they're going to step up to the game and live up to their potential. I would love to know what it is that is inciting that kind of confidence, but I don't think I share it.
Thank you, Ms. Dablow. Appreciate your input. The next on the list is Pat Grother.
Well, I'm not here to speak about the Hinton, but I agree with everything that they say. It is truly a disaster in this town. Now, what I am here to ask about is the pavement. I noticed that one of your lists for paving is Wood Avenue between East Queen Street and Elliot Street, which was done last year. And unfortunately, when it was paved, the pavement was raised about that much so that we lost sidewalk. The sidewalk is leveled with the road now, whereas it used to have a nice curve. And there are places on that sidewalk which are that much lower than the road. The drainage is terrible. The Queen Street is the same thing. The drainage there is not good. And also, at the end of Elliot Street, the drainage has changed there. We used, never had problems with that before. So, I'd like to know what is planned for that area of Wood Avenue between Queen and Elliot? Why is that on the list of pavement?
The section of Wood Avenue is from Church to East Queen.
Oh, because it was listed as Queen to Elliot. I'm pretty sure.
There are multiple areas there, but anything that was previously paved would not be repaved.
That's why I was wondering, because it was, I'm pretty sure that was what was...
And I'll have to look back. Do you remember where you saw the...
Yeah, it was in the information that you sent out by the month.
And I'll have to look at, and it should have been from East Queen to East Church, the section that was not paved during the water sewer repairs.
Is there any hope of having that area repaired so that we have a safe sidewalk?
Yes, ma'am. The sidewalk there, because of the age of what was there, was small to begin with. It was never to...
At least...
And some of that was added, who knows when, incorrectly, the sidewalk itself. And so, that would be part of the assessment, is to make sure that what's there is built correctly. You know, we oftentimes get assessments like that from Precision Sidewalks that do any of our DNR, as well as any places that need to be shaved or ground, but we will make sure to pay special attention to that when we're paving that section. And if it needs to be corrected, then that's what we'll have to do.
I hope so.
I've got two questions. Is the drainage problem on the sidewalk or the sidewalk and the street?
Both, yeah. On Queen especially.
And my second question is, Councilman Dixon has raised drainage problems before. Is this the same area or is this a different area?
Didn't it was fixed the part by the PNC office? That was the old PNC office. That used to...
Where the...
It still does.
Yeah, I don't think it's as bad as it was.
It remains there.
So, this is a different area than what?
Yeah, it remains there for a day or so. That one does. Yeah, at the end of Elliot Street. The water remains there for quite some time, as it does in front of Ben Speller and Mr. Davy and myself. In fact, Mr. Speller will once in a while, if the rain is terrible and the water hasn't moved, he'll go out and with a hole and put a little trench there and make it go to the drain, which shouldn't have to do.
And I'll be glad to respond to this because I would, we're glad to walk those areas down with the Public Works Director before we put any asphalt in. But I want to explain...
That, all of Queen Street was done also last year.
We did Queen from McMullen to the railroad tracks. And then, we did Wood from Queen to the 400 block of East King. We did 300 and 400 block all the way around to McMullen. There were two streets that were not paved, and one thing to note here, and this is, I'm going to be completely transparent about this, is that a lot of what's there, due to the nature of the infrastructure itself for stormwater, is undersized and very old. And so, we can make the repairs, but there's some trees and some sidewalks and some, a whole lot of...
But it was, it was better before the paving was done. It was, it was done. It drained before the paving was done. After they did all of the paving, it was terrible. It still is.
And I'll be glad to meet with you on site with Public Works Director to identify these hotspots. We get really creative with stormwater and find some pretty unique ways of additional space that most folks don't think of for undersized units, and let's try to do that.
Okay, something would be good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is Dawson Tyler.
So, thank you. I'll try to keep, keep this brief and somewhat positive. I am here to talk about the Hotel Hinton and how important I think it is to this town. As a preservationist, somebody that appreciates history, you know, I think this town has done an incredible job of leveraging all the assets that we have. I think that's only accelerated in recent history with things going on at Candace Church, things going on at Hayes, new opportunities abounding that show that preservation and economic development are two things that work hand-in-hand with each other. They're not opposed to each other. All those great things being said, you know, we've got a, we've got a big stick in the mud sitting right in the middle of all works, and it's been, it's been there for way too long. This town, this town council has done some really innovative things with housing, abandoned houses that are falling into the ground with redevelopment zones. These are things that happen in big cities, but you all have done that here, and you've done it really successfully, and it's something that, you know, I think should be applauded. It's made the entryways and certain corridors of Edenton really shine from a historic standpoint. Those are tools that you already have that can be pointed right at the Hotel Hinton. They work. You all have demonstrated that they work. You know, the citizens of this town, the people that have been speaking here, a lot of y'all present, a lot of people that aren't here, are great examples of what happened when kind of local communities get behind preservation efforts. I think of Pembroke Hall. I think of the Taylor Theater. Personally, we're doing the Jackson Dairy. That is being brought to bear by local citizens, not banks. So, there are ways that you can accomplish development that don't involve getting federal tax credits, that, you know, don't involve going out to all of these banks and these lending institutions. It happens in Edenton all the time. We are great at doing it. And I think one of the things that's unfortunate that we have to deal with is a company has taken control of this building that is not a preservation company. This is not what they do. This is not what Saga does. I think you could ask anybody at Saga, and if they were being honest with you, they would fully admit that restoring a 1920s hotel is not what they do. So, to me and to my company, you know, our commitment is to guide that hotel into the correct hands of somebody that knows what they're doing with it, someone that can make it that shining example of preservation in the middle of Edenton that we see happen here time and time again. And the town council here has been a great advocate for these things occurring. And I think we now understand you all are feeling the pressure. You all have felt the pressure internally. You all are frustrated. It's really time that we take the gloves off and we really go after this thing, and we be as aggressive as we can to make them do something or get rid of the hotel as quickly as possible. And I'm here to help make that happen, and, you know, if you ever need our resources, please, please, I'm here. And I want this for all the right reasons, for this town, and more than anything, to keep the momentum going. So, let's get after it.
Thank you, Dawson. And I think we're all of one accord on that, and we have been sufficiently bashed tonight. We take it in consideration and do the best we can with it. And with that, we are dismissed.